Good morning. Thank you for your patience. Today is May 17, 2022. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board Supervisors. Please stand with me if you are able and say with your flag.
My flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Again, sorry for the technical difficulties this morning. We would like to take just a moment. Did you want to say something? If you would, with us, please, just recognize a moment of silence for those who have lost their lives in Boulder and other gun violence, but specifically in Boulder, those who lost their life. I'm sorry, Buffalo. Those who lost their lives and those who are injured. Thank you. Thank you. I will entertain a motion to accept today's agenda. So moved. Moved and seconded. Okay. Acel, aye. Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If you would like to make public comment, feel free to come forward to the table. If you are on, will we be able to hear them on soon?
It'll pick up.
Okay, if you're on soon, please raise your hand. We're having technical difficulties, but should be able to provide you an opportunity. I think no one will close public comment number one. And nothing for agency reports this morning. We do have a presentation by Snyder Engineering regarding county inspection services. Christina Paradise, construction technician, and Wade Dryman. Isn't that right?
You want us just here?
That would be great, yeah. Chair.
Morning.
Good morning. I'll see you.
I got this one.
Yeah, can we hand a little presentation up to you? Sure. While she's doing that, first off, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. My name's Wade Dryman. I've been with Snyder and Associates since 1995. Ninety-four, graduate from Iowa State University with a civil engineering degree. Happened to have classes with Mr. Moon back there. But we greatly appreciate the opportunity to present to you today our qualifications and address any comments or questions that you may have. A little bit about myself. Like I mentioned, I've been with the firm for my entire career. My focus has been on public infrastructure, transportation, utilities. I get to co-manage a group of 70 engineers and technicians across the state of Iowa. Most of them in Ankeny, but Christina actually works in her Fort Dodge office, which I'm blessed to get to work with every day. So as it relates to what our firm does, we have been solicited by a number of different counties to present to the supervisors related to this type of service for both pipelines, the Navigator and the Summit. Some counties only have one pipeline going through. Some have both. You have both planned at this point. But our first and foremost obligation is to the county and to the citizens to represent you all to the best of our ability. Not to represent the pipelines. We are here to make sure that your interests are defended and taken care of as well as the property. So wanted to get that out in front of you first because that is probably the most important thing to convey here today. I'll turn it over to Christina to introduce herself and kind of walk through the presentation.
Well, my name is Christina Paradise, and I've been with Snyder for, I'm working on six years now. I left for a little bit and went and did a little small pipeline project and then came back. I have worked for the pipelines in the past. I've got 25 years' experience in heavy civil and industrial construction. I've worked in ethanol plants and power plants and refineries and pipelines. You name it, I've done it. So I've got, like I said, five to almost six years' experience with Snyder doing the civil work. So I'm very familiar with soils, paving, restoration, seeding, all those activities, backfilling, very familiar with. And I'm just going to run through the presentation now. So these slides kind of were made as a to-do list. So if you will, that's what this is. It's basically a to-do list. We have a number of administrative tasks to take care of. And the first one is to obtain the required documents from the pipeline company. So we need to get a copy of their land restoration plan if they get a permit. If they get a permit, you know, I mean, that's the first big hit. But then we would get a copy of their specs and procedures, alignment sheets, track information, landowner agreements, that sort of thing, to understand exactly. And then we build a file for each landowner, for each parcel that the pipeline crossed. From there, we would participate in topsoil survey depths to determine the depth of that topsoil so we know when we restore how deep we need to go with it. So we want to restore it. And we want to ensure that it's restored exactly like it was. That's our goal. Tile maps, tiling is going to be very important with your drainage district and then with the landowners as well. So we look at tile maps and then the tiles are struck by the pipeline, which I'm pretty sure that's going to happen. We would overs, well, it depends on what your drainage district agreement is with your engineer there. But we could assist with marking the locations of the breaks and screening and then documenting the temporary and the permanent tile repairs if necessary. Administrative tasks continued. We would exchange contact information with the pipeline company and the contractor. We want to meet with your landowners and exchange contact information so each one of them has a way to get in touch with us at all times and develop reporting templates in accordance with IUB procedures. So they're pretty specific.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'll remember it.
Okay.
You said you're going to meet with the landowners. Are you going to meet with every single landowner?
We would like to have a group meeting, a group sit-down.
In each county that you're in?
In each county, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We would request to do that so that we can introduce ourselves to them and so that they are familiar with who we are, who we represent. Pardon?
How are you going to contact?
We have a listing. Go ahead.
Through our survey department. That's part of their job is they look up parcels. So they're looking at the parcel numbers as the map process the state. If you look at the back four pages of the presentation, that's your maps, that's Summit Pipeline and then Navigator. So we're just taking those and going through each parcel and looking up the landowner information, getting the track number and all that.
You'll have to change that in the final route or stuff.
Absolutely, it'll be revised.
Because these are just preliminary routes and I already know there's some changes.
Yes, ma'am, of course. Yes, ma'am.
But you're already working on it.
We are, yes.
Have you worked for Story County or just the counties that you've already contracted?
The counties that we've already got contracts there. It took, well, it took three days for Hancock County.
And they have one.
They have one. Now, Story County, the Summit Pipeline is going to be first. I think, they say that they're going to construct in 2023. They're going to go for the permit in the fall and then...
It's about six months for the name to come.
Or more, because we haven't seen an application for permit yet from them.
Oh.
So, I mean, they've got a lot of filings. They filed an intent to file for a permit, but there's no, there's no application yet.
So you worked on Summit first, obviously.
Obviously, yes, ma'am, yeah.
So then, since they're preliminary maps, are you like taking a wide swath? Yeah, swath of landowners and contacting all of them?
We're trying to, yeah. What we're trying to do is look at, if it just, you know, crosses, clips a corner of a property, we're going to go ahead and capture the properties on the other side of it, just to make sure we catch it.
And we would obviously want to do that in concert with your staff too and possibly yourselves as well, if you wish. But we want it to be very clear who we're representing. It might say Snyder and Associates on our shirts or on our hard hats, but it will be Story County in this regard and the property owners.
In concert is good, but you wouldn't rely on Story County staff to do any of the work?
We can do all the lifting you need us to do.
That's exactly what I'm saying. Surplus folks to be. That's why I was here. We would want to be involved. Okay. I'm sorry.
Okay, no worries. Interrupt anytime. I mean, if you have a question, just jump in, okay? So the next page, I'm on slide number four, is more. So I've got to conduct an intensive inspection team training with the crew, get them all on board with IUB requirements and landowner agreements and how to look things up and, you know, just, I want everybody to be on the same page and that's how we work.
How many people in your inspection team?
Currently, we have...
For both offices, we probably have 15. Some of those staff members are interns and co-ops that are in the engineering field at Iowa State, Iowa, Wisconsin Platteville, Missouri Rolla. We've been recruiting quite a bit for inspection every year. So this is the standard thing that we do. But the leadership and the onsite leadership will be a full-time experienced person with decade or more experience in the construction field. Christina would manage everybody and be the point source for all counties and make sure that everybody's being communicated consistently and appropriately assigned to each segment.
And just another word to that. I managed inspection crews at two fabrication facilities in two different states, in Arkansas and in Salt Lake City when I was working on the Keystone Pipeline project. So I do know how to manage and delegate and, you know, people that are spread out. It's not...
You're working for inspectors then or for the pipeline?
I was working for the company, for TransCanada. I was their inspector. I managed a third, actually a third-party inspection team that did surveillance over the QC, just to make sure they were doing things properly. So, and there was 12 on that team in two different states. So slide number five. The single point of contact for scheduling, according to the IUB, and I'm not even going to read the code numbers, but the pipeline company shall keep the county inspector continuously aware of its construction schedule. In 24 hours, advance notice shall be provided for construction activity that the county inspector is responsible for inspecting. I would be that person. I would be that point of contact. And everything would come through me and then I would dispatch personnel as required. So I would be the switchboard operator and the, you know, car shuffler. County inspector shall designate a lead inspector. Again, that would be me. The next one is responsibilities of the county inspector. So we will have to maintain copies of all the separate agreements between the landowners and the pipeline company. Do you all have an ordinance or resolution for certain requirements from the pipeline company? Or are you just going to go with what the IUB has? Or have you talked about that?
We have discussed some of these things. We don't have a formal agreement yet.
Okay.
We need to get back to that. But we have discussed some things about boring, for example.
Yes, ma'am.
Boring under drainage tiles, boring in the creeks, streams, those kinds of things.
Okay.
Robles as well on some.
Yes, they have, and I agree.
So the landowner or the separate agreements that are discussed in here are, that's the easements. So each landowner can negotiate whatever they want into their easement. They might want the pipeline company to dive down 12 foot, you know, and that's their prerogative. And if the pipeline agrees to that, then we hold them to that. So that's why it's so important for us to have all those agreements. We would want a copy of any resolution you guys had and any agreements that you made with the pipeline company as well. We would observe and document construction activities performed by the pipeline company and its contractors and document compliance and/or non-compliance with all requirements and the approved restoration plan and independent agreements. We will issue stop work orders when violations are identified and we will issue a notice of violation as required. And that goes through the chain all the way up to your desk if things are not resolved on the spot. I find that typically, maybe the first time, it can go up the ladder a little far, but after the first time, we make believers out of them, usually that's all it takes. Just let them know we're not playing. The responsibilities of the county inspector continue. So this is a list of what our scope is, basically. So we would cover construction in wet conditions. Again, we would have the stop authority if conditions are too wet or saturated for work to continue. Dewatering activities, it's very important that when they de-water, they'll have to probably pump water out of a ditch. We want it to be filtered. We don't want it all to just pour out onto the land and put silt out and all that. So we would take care of that. Right-of-way staking, that would be, the right-of-way staking is the responsibility of the pipeline. We would monitor that activity. And we would also potentially get some rover shots, some GPS shots to confirm where they are. So then when we come back for construction, we know where that line is and we can watch them and make sure that it don't go over the line. And then all activities related to clearing, boring activities, topsoil removal and stop piling, trenching, tile marking, screening, temporary repair, and then permanent tile repair. So, continue. Backfilling, decompaction, cleanup, restoration and revegetation, pipeline testing, project completion, and document submittals. So the document submittals is the final turnover package that would go to the IUB. Well, that's our responsibilities and our, according to the IUB, that's our role. That's what we're supposed to do. The other part of the inspection process would be handled by another regulatory agency that's not the IUB. It would be a federal.
It would be federal, sorry?
A federal, federal. It would be FEMSA. The maps, they're just general, you know, they're the estimated or the anticipated route. So it's 16-inch pipeline that Summit has coming through Story County. 16-inch diameter pipe. That's what I read yesterday. And then Navigator, I am not sure. I didn't see anything that actually showed me what the diameter was, but you guys are, the truck line goes right through here. So I would imagine it to be 16-inch or potentially even 24 for Navigator.
It's about 6-inch.
That's not correct.
Summit?
It says 6-inch. It says it there, but there's another document on the IUB website that said 16.
Okay, and this is theirs, those are theirs?
These are theirs, yes, ma'am. No, just none of this is mine. But if you look at Navigator, see, it doesn't show anything in either spot.
We'll want to confirm that.
All of it has to be confirmed, yeah. They're still in the planning stages. They don't have alignment sheets yet. I met with, I went to a landowner meeting with Summit Carbon, what, six weeks ago? And they said, you know, we don't have alignment sheets yet. We don't know where our final location is going to be. We're, you know, we're just kind of throwing darts at it. Yeah, throwing darts at it, right there. So...
So... Are, do you know, are they planning to work in more than one place at one time?
Yes, ma'am. They, from what I learned, I think they will run two or four crews. Was it four?
Four crews.
Four crews. And they said that on the best day, on the very best conditions, one crew could cover three miles in one day.
And so do you anticipate having enough staff then to oversee all of those different moving parts?
Absolutely. So four crews would be two staff members per crew.
Statewide.
That's right.
So some counties we're not representing.
Right.
I'm glad you asked that question.
Oh, four crews.
Yes.
Okay, not in Story County.
No, four crews, period, so...
That may change depending upon their production rate and weather. But we have made a conscious decision to make sure that we're rightsized with our representation for all the counties that we're representing. Right now, you are the seventh county to reach out to us and we're about there with capacity. So we're not anticipating taking on more work. We are still waiting to hear back from Palo Alto County. They have not made the decision to move forward yet because they're waiting for some additional developments with IUB on the stats of the pipeline. So, but right now, we're very conscientious on our rightsizing of our staff and capacity and the demands. With each crew that's going with the pipeline, we're anticipating more than one inspector on site. We're anticipating someone to make sure that the drainage is taken care of and documented, someone that's managing the trench and making sure that that's safe conditions and the topsoil is restored as close to the original as it can be. And then restoration, so at least two and possibly three people per site, depending upon their production rate and how quickly they're going. So with that, I mentioned that coverage is important to make sure that we have enough people on grade. And sometimes that does require us to bring in engineers from the office to help assist us with that, just the coverage. But everything that we do will go through her. We want her to be, she's the boss for us in terms. So it's, she has the most experience with pipelines on both sides of the aisle, the public side and the private.
Did you, Christina, did you tell them that you're going to be working with Hope County on Navigator?
We are.
They have?
I think so. Did they commit?
Yeah, they've asked us for a contract and we're dropping that actually today.
So here's one of our discussions and whatever the IUB. You're doing Webster as both Summit and Navigator?
Correct.
Casoots, both Summit and Navigator. Green, which would just be Summit because Navigator doesn't go there. Hancock is just Summit.
Correct.
And Hope is just Navigator then.
Correct.
So that's one, two, three, four, that's five.
Yeah, you would be sixth and then Palo Alto, potentially seventh. And then Palo Alto, just west of Casoots.
No, but I've got Webster, Casoots, Green, Hancock and Hope.
Correct. That's fine.
You've got five for sure.
Yes.
Okay, then possibly all.
Yes.
So... I'm a little unclear in the end, probably. You now would have the authority to stop construction. That's a change in the administrative rules. It allows that, correct? Because did the inspectors, when Dakota Access came through, did they have the authority to stop construction then?
I would not know. I was not, I didn't participate in that project. But I can tell you that it does state very clearly in the rules that we have this stop work order.
When we get started again after that?
We give them an all-clear.
So it would rest with you? It doesn't go anyplace else, I mean, or?
There are tiers, there are levels of, so the first action would be, I notice a non-conformant, I stop work in the field, I talk with the foreman, we discuss a corrective action and agree on it, and they correct it, and then work just goes back. That's the ideal situation. If it goes above that, the next level, if you will, would be to call in the pipeline, the pipeline group and deal with them. And if they still won't stop, it comes to you. I have to prepare a written report that I would bring to your desk and they're still supposedly shut down. Now, if they don't stop and they keep working, you know, I mean, it's just, it's one of those things. They're supposed to stop work. And we just keep escalating it up, up, up the ladder to the IUB is the final, if things don't get resolved. And that can, they said that can prevent, the IUB will say it can prevent the pipeline from going into operation if there are non-conforming items that are unresolved.
So do you have to, would you potentially need to call in law enforcement if they're not performing and continue to work with them, stop work on them?
I think they'll stop. I think, you know, I think that maybe the first time it'll get, you know, it might have to go up a little ways. But I think after the first time, like I said, after we make a believer out of them and they know, you know, we do know what we're talking about and we will enforce this, that they'll stop, they'll correct it, they'll be eager to do so, and they're going to be happy to move on.
Can I U B revoke the permit?
We cannot revoke the permit.
I U B cannot?
I U B cannot revoke the permit. They can prevent them from going into operation though.
So by that time, we could, yeah, just remove the egg from it.
That's right.
And when you say it escalates and then you would write a report and it would come to us?
Right.
What authority?
You in turn would go to the I U B with the written report and with our, you know, with us. And we would go talk to the I U B about it. That's just the way the rules are written. That's what it says. So stop and write a report, then come to you guys. What else? Any other questions?
Pipeline companies you worked for?
I worked for TransCanada on the Keystone Pipeline project. That was a small project. I was actually employed by Bechtel Construction. And I was the fab shop coordinator for two fab shops in Utah and then Arkansas. Then I went to Cushing, Oklahoma for Bechtel, working as a representative of TransCanada. And I did the turnover. So I was the turnover coordinator there. And that's from construction to commissioning. So I did punch lists, walk down of all the systems, verify completions. And then I worked for Columbia Pipeline over on the East Coast and did a gas pipeline with them.
So were you ever in a situation where you needed to stop construction, where there was a problem?
I have shut down work before. I shut down work at ISU when I worked for Snyder. We had an issue that was not safe and it was not going well. Threw the flag and said, stop, and they did stop. So, yeah, I mean, I did that. They corrected. We talked about it. We talked about alternate means of doing what they were trying to accomplish. They agreed that what they were doing was not the safest, not the best practice, and they changed what they were doing.
And I assume you share the same obligation with Mr. Snyder that you would be working for the county and...
Absolutely, 100%. I mean, if my grandparents' farm were in Iowa and this pipeline was going through their farm, that's how I'm going to treat these people. Because I feel like we owe it, we owe it to the landowner.
Is the most important thing about the egg in that communication?
It's the topsoil. I mean, it's the topsoil. That's the most important aspect of farmland.
Tiling is right there too.
Well, of course, tiling. We've got to keep the water off of the top, but the topsoil. Protecting the stop pile, stripping and stopping the topsoil and then protecting the tiles.
Hope to the maintenance or drainage engineer. And they have, they said they would be willing to do the drainage tunnel.
Okay.
Absolutely, we're working with them in Green County. Same arrangement.
Yeah.
Glad you asked that. I was going to mention that. Glad you asked that, I was going to mention that if you have a drainage engineer on board that you're comfortable with, we're more than happy to team with them and represent you as a team.
One thing to look at is they've done a lot of internal reports, Mr. or K I on drainage. So definitely a lot of information already on you.
Yeah, we, we would actually enjoy that relationship then if they know, they know what's going on, then we'll rely upon their expertise and.
We were looking at the closure route for Summit and I think we saw something like twenty-two possible crossings and that was before we even saw the Navigator and we have been counting up what Navigator, because we want to.
Sure, that's quite a thing.
It's almost close, you know, but you count all the report that we were, we were close.
Summit said they would encourage you guys, all the drainage districts to, in advance of the pipeline, construct headers on your tiles so that they wouldn't go through there. So they, so that you would construct a header and just drag, drag in the other direction. They would be happy to pay for that and that you, we could use, you could use any contractor, your preferred contractor is what they said. So, and they will foot the bill for that.
What's that, what do you mean?
A header is, so let's say you've got three tiles running parallel to one another and the pipeline is going to cross those, right? They would want you to build a header on either side to make the, to clear the way for the pipeline. And you would just construct it, one going perpendicular to catch all those, to catch the water from those and drain out.
It'd be a parallel tile?
Yes.
On either side of the pipeline that would collect the subsurface drainage from the tile network.
Thank you.
So, so that would require digging up all the ground around there in addition to what the pipeline is going to already do.
That is, yes, that is your product. Green County actually wanted to do that because they're doing some improvements and they see this as an opportunity to perhaps get part of their improvements, you know, paid for, so.
That's something that we would recommend, we would speak with Bolden and make directly, get their recommendation.
I don't know what the cost would be, I'm not going to, the drainage alone, but that would require engineering reports, which the landowners would not, should not pay for. And then as well as the construction, it seems to me that it's, seems like a very large project to add in addition.
So Green County is, the pipeline is giving all those costs, not pulling back on the landowners?
No, the pipelines, the, the pipeline is paying for that.
The pipeline is.
The pipeline will foot the bill.
Even the engineering report?
That's, they said they would pay for it. So. That's what they said.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure it's a writing.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see a letter written to, that would, yeah.
Yeah, a commitment, yeah.
And, and I could, I could do that, I could write an email and just get a, something in writing from, from Kelsey and see what she says.
Greens, maybe, I don't know, but they're drainage, so it's likely, it, it doesn't come as far as Green County. It's similar, but it's about half, half the length.
About eight miles.
Yeah, it's not very much.
We're, we're coming to like.
They're barreling through here, yeah, yeah.
Eight miles of green, seventy point seven is sure, he's so double.
Yeah, did I?
A lot of studying.
So, yeah, that was.
The contract mechanism, the way we'd set it up with other counties, that our contract would lie with you, the county, and we would not get paid until you get paid for by the, by the pipeline itself, so.
Do you have a sample contract you can send us?
I do, actually I've heard copies here with me. You only give those to Darren or?
Um, one, how many got?
Two.
From Darren, one to me, only copies.
Okay.
That's probably one of the electronic.
Electronic copies are great if you're trying to assess it because then you build, so get it.
Absolutely.
And then the designations that you've seen filed on the I U B with the other counties, we have those as well. Those would need to come to you electronically so that you could put them on your letterhead if you, if you make a decision, you know, that you would like.
I assume that you have written us.
Uh, yeah, yes, ma'am. And what else? I think that's it.
I was just going to.
The designations, yeah.
Any other questions? Do you have any idea what counties that don't want you opposed, instead of with ISG, do they say why?
No. We, we tend not to try to ask either. I mean, there's stuff you hear, but I, I discount all that stuff until it's proven, so I don't, I don't know why.
Christine has got the experience in working with this before, have you had any experience before your, your company had experience?
With Story County?
With, with being county inspector on a pipeline project?
Uh, no, not on, not on a pipeline like this. We work with, we would do quite a bit of work for other counties on public infrastructure projects, some in the rural areas, some in the urban areas. All counties are, I mean, we're right there in Polk County with our accounting office, we have a pretty good relationship with them. If you want a reference, feel free to contact Green County, Webster County, Polk County, Hancock County, most of the, most of the counties that have reached out to us because of our past working relationship with them. And ask them about our service, who we are, because that's the most important thing that we have is our service.
And we do underground utilities all the time. I mean, underground utilities is, is our specialty and, you know, then it's the restoration in the paving and the sidewalks and all that. We do.
So we're, and this, this project would not include us inspecting any of the piping or the welding or anything like that. This is just about the trench, tiles and compaction slash decompaction of the top section and restoration.
Civil, civil.
So who, who then does the inspection of the welding?
The pipelines will be responsible for that.
Well, it's better not.
Per, per fins, per, per the federal regulatory agency. So we would not participate in any of that at all.
Um, I understand that floor engineering is doing the drainage tile work in Casoots.
Correct.
Are they Casoots drainage engineer?
I think they are and they're also doing it in Webster with us.
Okay.
And we presented them in Palo Alto as well.
But you don't have an agreement with it, with them?
Not yet, not Palo Alto.
Okay.
Hancock has not come back to us, I think Bolden makes represents them on their drainage too, but they haven't come back with, to us with their preference.
I didn't know that was doing drainage.
Yeah.
Palo Alto, is Summit or Navigator or both?
That is Summit. Because Navigator kind of splits around those kinds of things.
Yeah.
But Palo Alto, Palo Alto has over six hundred drainage districts, so that's, that's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot.
That, that resolution, I would really strongly encourage you guys to, to sit down and get one finalized, wouldn't you? I mean, I think that's a good way to.
Yeah.
Protect your interests.
Do you have a one you can send us?
I do, I can email you one.
If you prefer, we could send that along with the electronic draft of our contract on same email.
Why don't you do that and then I'll distribute it?
Okay.
And then there's one other thing, the easement negotiations for the landowners. Um, that's, you guys want to encourage your landowners to get good agreements with the pipeline company.
You're still working on a list of landowners, yeah.
I didn't, we did a tentative list, I think we started with Summit, but it's, we don't, it's not an official list. And I've been asking for that and Summit is still resisting.
Yeah, they're not going to give, they're not, they're not going to provide that until they have the agreements.
Oh, it's really the I U B, not Summit.
Yes, it is, I agree. And I think, who was it, the? The one that's fighting the, it's not the Arbor Day.
Sierra.
Thank you very much, the Sierra Club has requested that as well and, you know, I mean, there's a lot of litigation going on.
And I think the O C A is in favor for being given out.
It's, it is, it's public information, if you look at this map and you take the time, you can, you can make your own list. So I don't know why they're, they're holding it secret, you know?
They, because it's more difficult to do that.
Exactly, it costs more money and time.
Certainly.
Yeah.
And that's why I asked how you were planning on.
No, we, we've already got it going.
That is, we want, we would like to have a copy of their agreement with the pipeline company too, so that we can represent their interests. That's why that goes into their individual file for each parcel.
So how do you get that, you just ask each landlord and you have a copy of it, because it's not, that's not necessarily public, is it?
I don't know if it is or not.
I think.
Run with the land, so eventually it would have to be filed with the county.
It's the pipeline's responsibility to provide us with those, but in case they forget or, you know, if something happens, we would like to have them from the landowners.
Right.
Do you cooperate with the negotiation with the landowners?
We have not.
No, we do have a, a document that we've prepared that's kind of a, a help, yeah, yeah, just something to give them some food for thought, some things to consider. Because there's a lot to it, you know? This document contains some things I had never even thought of, so it's pretty thorough and I'd be happy to share that with you guys.
So the contract, resolution, documents. Anything else you can question? Let me ask our engineer, Darren, do you have any questions?
Yeah, all questions answered.
All questions answered.
All right, thank you, thank you so much.
Item number eight, consideration of minutes, there are no minutes today, consideration of personnel actions. Side, uh, it's not action, second, moved it seconded and.
I was moved to printable by him on consent agenda, the contract agreement was let out of T V action.
I would second, market, I, case of, I, head of state. Moving on to consent agenda minus item number four. Other consent agenda items minus number four is presented, second, moved in seconded, okay, five, case of, I. Okay, moving on to public hearing items, we have first consideration of ordinance number three oh four, amending chapter eighty-five point eight. Chapter ninety-two and chapter ninety-three.
So as far as this ordinance today, staff is requesting that the board remand the ordinance, ordinance back to staff to work through the special exceptions section further with the county attorney's office and set the first consideration for May thirty-first. So I understand that you guys have all seen the memo about that. So I know there was a couple of things put forward throughout all of this, but just the main focus is that the special exceptions section needs to be tweaked a little bit just based on some recent rulings. Also at planning zoning commission, there's some questions about a couple of the provisions that ultimately ninety-two point one one sub one sub A and ninety-two oh nine, those requirements for the C two C plan, those two ones there. That those would be stricken going forward. So I just want to put out that those things would be removed based on the memo as you guys have seen, so.
She don't want us to improve part of it today?
No, we just want to remand it back so we can finish up with the county attorney's office, what happened with recent ruling, so. But then the other stuff as in that memo will be stricken, so.
There was some disagreement about whether part of those would be struck or not, correct?
Um, to my understanding, these, what's written in this memo, these would be this part, the ninety-two oh nine, the requirement that the C two C plan be amended prior to the rezoning. And the ninety-two point, that all permits conform to the C two C, sounds like those two are going to be stricken. And we'll bring it back to you, but the main thing is that special exception, that's what the, that's why it says to be remanded back, it took just a little bit longer, so.
Making sure you have any questions before I open the hearing, okay. So go ahead and open public hearing, I believe we have someone who would like to make a comment. And if you don't mind, yeah.
Absolutely. All right, is that coming through, okay? All right, thank you very much for taking a few minutes to listen to my concerns this morning. My name is Brad Perkins. My wife and I operate Raspberry Hill Bed and Breakfast on two hundred and forty eighth street in Ames, Iowa. And I'd like to take a few seconds to address the chapter ninety-two, section eleven, one A. It was our, it was our concerns that kind of led to that being struck at the Planning and Zoning Commission. Allergies seem to be acting up this year and I just wanted to address it and kind of follow up through with this board here. Our concerns resulted from not necessarily what the county might do with, with the ordinance as written, but I think everyone here, if you don't know the history of our business, four years ago, we received permits for a bed and breakfast, a conditionally used permit on the land at two hundred and forty eighth street. Since that time, we are still in litigation with the neighbor that is suing the county over those permits. To the extent of, oh, some, maybe six different lawsuits that the county has been engaged in and continues to be engaged in. Among the many frivolous complaints that they have, one of them in challenging our permits is that the county aired when they awarded our permits by not conforming to the Ames Urban Fringe Plan. Now, what I would like to do, and Amelia has a copy of our, of the judgment, one of many judgments in our hearings, but I would encourage you to read that, what the judge said about the Ames Urban Fringe Plan. I, I'm going to summarize, you can read the whole thing, it's very lengthy, you know, at your leisure at another time, but in essence, what the. But in essence, what the judge said is that Ames Urban Fringe Plan is a framework for an agreement between the city and the county that kicks in when we subdivide land or we change zoning. Our concern with this ordinance and the upcoming revisions to Ames Urban Fringe Plan results from, if you look at ninety-two eleven, one A, says applicable permits, and this would be among many permits, one of them would be conditional use permits. Applicable permits shall certify the use and/or structure conforms to all the minimum requirements of the ordinance. And here's the addition that concerned us. And the cornerstone to capstone, C two C comprehensive plan. Our concern would be, if you look at the new cornerstone to capstone plan that's currently being reviewed, if you look in the urban reserve overlay, it calls out, oh, sorry. It calls out that the following conditional uses are not considered compatible with the urban reserve overlay. Among several, campground and bed and breakfast would not be compatible. My concern is that the Ames Urban Fringe Plan would be used to tell property owners under existing zoning that you could not get a conditional use permit for a business like ours. The net effect of that would be, if you strictly interpreted chapter ninety-one of the ordinance, which is the non-conforming uses. What it would say is that a non-conforming use is something that was legal when you got the permit, but would be prohibited, regulated, or restricted under the provisions of the current ordinance. In other words, our concern would be, our business was legal when we got it, but under the Ames Urban Fringe Plan, that would be a restricted use. And if you were to adopt the new change to chapter ninety-two, it would say that all permits must conform to, not take under advisement, not, you know, listen to the intent, conform to the cornerstone to capstone plan, of which the Ames Urban Fringe Plan is a part. My next concern would be that if we become a non-conforming use, then let's say another ratio hits, a tornado hits, or whatever hits. It's Iowa. That could happen today. Who knows? But then if we were ruled a non-conforming use, we would not be allowed to rebuild our business, should it be damaged in some way. And I realize Amelia said, well, that's not how the county interprets that. Okay. I have other concerns, like maybe a neighbor that seems convinced of trying to extinguish us as a business and using the courts as their own perp, as their own personal billy club to get that done. My point here for this board is, is a couple fold. One, the addition of conforming to the cornerstone to capstone plan serves no benefit to the county and only would make a mess of things potentially. We followed all of the rules, all of the laws. We found property that was properly zoned. We went to the Board of Adjustment. We went to Planning and Zoning. We followed the rules and we have a business. I get concerned when small things like that could be used to threaten the business that we have tried to establish. We are a small family business. These last few years for small businesses have been difficult. Between durations, lockdowns, and runaway inflation, every small business in the county is facing challenges. We don't need more. Also, any small business, if you look at the cornerstone to capstone plan and the Ames Urban Fringe Plan, suddenly, any small business that would go for a conditional use permit under the, under the new guidelines, would have to get approval for the, for the city. If we're in the county, then that's what the county has boards for. This is why we have Planning and Zoning Commission. This is why we have the Board of Adjustment. It's for the county to make these decisions. There's nothing wrong with consulting with the city, but giving them approval or letting them dictate which, which permits that currently zoned land could or could not use is the wrong approach. So I would just urge this board in the county to carefully look at every word. And don't just think about how maybe our own planning and zoning department might look at these words. Think about how someone might use it for unintended consequences. Trying to live through four years, ongoing four years of litigation for a small business has been painful. And I don't wish to add anymore to that potential. The Ames Urban Fringe Plan does not and should not be used to supersede zoning law. Zoning law is the agreement between property owner, property user, and the county. That is our law. That is our legal agreement. That is what we both agree to. When I buy it and the county zones it, that is our agreement. The Ames Urban Fringe Plan should not be used as a end run around that law. That's why it's an agreement. It's so that everybody is above board, so that maybe a developer doesn't come in knowing future plans that nobody else knows and is able to get some economic advantage on someone that doesn't know these things. That's why we have agreements, so that everybody's above board with the long-term county plans. But these agreements are not meant to supersede zoning law. Let us keep them separate. Let's not allow the cornerstone to capstone plan or the fringe plans to slowly erode into those property rights.
There are going to be three public comment sessions for the Urban Fringe Plan. They're currently listed on Planning and Development, Planning and Development's website. I think they're discussed. I would encourage you to, um, learn more, learn those, all of those.
Absolutely.
To give your feedback specifically to the Urban Fringe Plan. Specifically, I know this is all interrelated, but a lot of what you're talking about is regarding the Urban Fringe Plan. And I think that would be a more appropriate place for you to go.
Absolutely. I absolutely will. But I did want to explain why, you know, this half sentence, if it, if it was just adopted as written, this particular half sentence because of the Ames Urban Fringe Plan.
That's true.
Chapter ninety-two, section eleven, one A.
Yes.
Right? Absolutely. And, and that's why I just, I, I will absolutely be using those public hearing times. However, the amendment to the county ordinance at hand, there's a reason that I, I want to make sure everybody understands why that particular half sentence matters so much and, and why it could be, why it could be a bad move to make. And I, I, I think the, obviously, the county Planning and Zoning Commission already moved to delete that out of the ordinance. Sounds like that it's going to be remanded to Planning and Zoning to fix and tighten up perhaps. I mean, those are good things. But I just thought, the sooner that the Board of Supervisors knows our concerns, the more likely it is that you would, you know, under, under, understand the why, you know, the, the deeper why behind all of it. Right? Did, did the, did the board have any questions for, for myself and our business before concluding? I just want to make sure you had a chance.
I don't have any questions. I appreciate you coming and sharing this with us greatly. Got some questions? Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. Any other comments for public?
Good morning, board. If there's any questions for me, I just, I just stepped out of the training. Sorry about that.
Oh, gosh. I don't, I don't think.
Do we have any questions for Amelia at this moment?
At this time, I guess I'd like to see once she tightens up the language or makes the changes, I mean. There's no questions?
I don't have any questions. Thanks, Amelia.
Yes, thank you, Amelia.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Would it be appropriate that the motion just remand all ordinance?
Yeah, that's, that's what should be asked.
I would move that we remand ordinance three oh four back to staff and changes as, as explained and set May thirty-first for first consideration.
Okay. Moved it seconded. Merkin. Aye. Head five. Basil. Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to additional items, we have consideration of resolution twenty-two dash eighty-five. Do we?
Morning, board. We have today is a resolution in reference to another FEMA hazard mitigation grant application that I am planning to submit for the backup generator project for this facility. We, our most recent application was not chosen, but there was another grant opportunity that I seen through FEMA. So there was a part of that is additional cost associated with the generator, so it raised the overall project cost. And then the new resolution, it was, shows six hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars for total project cost. County would be responsible for a hundred and three thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-five cents. The previous grant application was roughly six hundred and fifteen thousand total cost. County's responsibility would be ninety-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars. This project is currently budgeted for in FY twenty-three. And it is budgeted at six hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars for total expense, with revenue showing for five hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars, which would be a difference of a hundred and sixty-four thousand, thirty-two dollars. So, long story short, the new grant application falls within what we have budgeted for next fiscal year.
Questions on the resolution itself? So under the third, we're asked, we're now therefore be resolved. It says available up to three thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars, eighty-five cents. And then we're in the C, it's written out as one hundred and three thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars, eighty-five cents.
Oh. Does it does?
Yeah. Is it supposed to be the one oh?
It's the one oh three, five thirty-two, eighty-five.
So there's a motion out of the motion, but those corrections.
Yes, but we would have to bring this back.
Right, okay, yeah.
Mm-hmm. So that's what I will intend to do if we,
so we-
if you, yeah, because giving that it is incorrect on the document, we can't.
Right. Sorry, I just-
No, it's a good catch, because I missed, three of us missed that.
When's the grant application deadline?
Um, there isn't a specific deadline, because this one is based off of, it would be, I think it's four different disaster dollar programs, and this would be the leftovers from that collectively, so. So they're anticipating end of summer, so they haven't set a deadline for applications for this current grant.
So we put it down for next week?
Yeah, yeah, we have time for next Tuesday. So I think at this point, we just-
Give you direction to take it back.
Yep, then we'll go back next weekend. Yes, I apologize for that.
Any other questions about it? Okay, so thanks for continuing to try to get those.
Yeah, trying, so.
All right, so we will see you next week.
Yes.
With that.
Sounds like a plan.
Thank you. Thanks. Looking on next, yeah. Moving on to discussion, consideration of adding office space for C I C F at Human Services Center.
Yes, um, so what we have here is, as we're all aware, that C I C S is going to be leasing some space at the Human Services Center. And back in the northwest corner, northeast corner of that is a area that has two cubicles. And since we started kind of working through designing this lease and preparing for the the move of employees over to a regional employment, Russell Wood, who is with C I C S, I believe he is on today. He was earlier. He might have had to step out. His role with C I C S has him relocating two-story county for a permanent office space. So there is a need for offices, private office space at that location. And that, the area that we're proposing to put an office in wasn't slated to be used at, in the immediate onset of the lease agreement. It's part of what they are leasing, but they didn't have staff to go in it right away, so. It would essentially be building a wall to enclose it. C I C S would pay for the construction of the project.
So it's not, it's not changing the footprint that we talked about last?
Yes, it's falling, yep. It falls right within what they are, the space that they are leasing. It's just adding a wall instead of being open.
So at the bottom of your letter, it has cost performing, that's going to be thirteen thousand, seven hundred, and then there's another one that says fifteen thousand.
Yep. If you look at the pictures that were attachments, you'll see that what's in question is, is the current design has the, it's got oversized doors and windows that are high up because that, the exterior wall is windows, and that allows for natural light into the interior space. And so the fifteen thousand, seven hundred would be to match that look of the existing offices. And then the thirteen thousand, seven hundred would be to just put in the standard door without the windows. Forgot to present it both ways, and I, that's how I presented it to, when we got the estimates, to Russell Wood. My recommendation would be to match the existing look so that it looks the same and allows that natural light into the open area of the office.
So since C I C S though is planning to cover the costs, do they make that final decision of what they want?
No, that would be your decision of which direction, yeah. Yep. And when I spoke with Russell, he was, yes, of course, they would like to see the cheaper option, but they would, they understood and were willing to pay the additional cost to have it matched.
Yeah, it makes sense that we match it.
Yep.
So I would make the motion that we approve- So I would make motion that we approve the work of the estimate of $15,700 for the wall over frame, finaglizing and framing and associated hardware for the additional CICS bracket office.
And seconded, Merkin.
Thank you.
Next, we have consideration of 28E agreement for Headwaters and Skunk River watershed management authority.
You may swap out cameras again while I'm talking.
Okay. That's not going to disconnect.
Nope, nope, it won't. It may interrupt me talking, but this is only, we have this off, it's just for sound right now. And so this item before you is something we've been working on for quite a while. The, as you know, the Headwaters and South Skunk is, let's, in Story County, primarily the Kigley Ranch, so north, northwest of Nevada, and going on up into the counties to north. There were some issues identified with the current 28E agreement, so we kind of went a little bit back to the drawing board and did some revisions. This action is considering that 28E agreement, I do need to bring it back for formal adoption by resolution pursuant to the agreement. I do want to note one change that will ultimately need to be made. It came to my attention, City Roland has a different address they use now, rather than what's in the agreement, so that's just swapping out those two pages. Doesn't address the content of the agreement at all.
To the signature page.
Um, no, that where it says notices are sent to the jurisdictions, those two pages. And I've already sent that to City Roland, they actually are the ones that caught it, and then I'll send out all the other cooperators later today, so that they have that information. Are there any questions for me? And Linda, you've been involved, there's.
We're getting it finalized.
Yeah.
Can you see if you're going to be bringing this back?
It'll be on consent as, next week as a resolution for formal action. I guess I do want to note that once all the cooperators have signed it, they are returned back to me, and I will then go forward and record it and put on Secretary State's website. That's something that Story County has done in the past.
So you just need direction to consider.
Yeah, you can approve it today, the actual agreement, and then there'll be a resolution acting on the agreement, too.
A motion to approve the 28E agreement for Headwaters and South Skunk River watershed management authority with discussed changes. We draw back. As a resolution next, next word. Moved and seconded, Headens.
Aye.
Aye. Basil, aye.
Thank you, man. You're live on the out now.
You're live now. Okay, wonderful. This has been a fun ride with all the technology. Okay, so moving on to discussion of consideration of Story County's participation in sponsorship of City of Ames' Juneteenth celebration. This is something I've been talking with Vanessa Baker-Lattermore at the City of Ames for about a month, about what the city's plans are to recognize Juneteenth. She's, she's pulling together quite a fantastic recognition celebration. My memo lists all of the different partners that are involved in planning right now, Ant Human Relations Committee, Ames Police Department, Ames Public Library, Ames State, Iowa State, Black Faculty and Staff, Black Liberation Movement, and NAACP. I know she's working on trying to pull in more participants, but there's going to be music and face painting and activities and a movie at the end, food trucks. And I just, I thought it would be a really important, I, I thought it was really important that the county show some support and get involved, and so I asked her to give me an idea of what that might look like, and so we could sponsor the Kona ice truck for 250 cups at $1,000, and then anything over that amount, people would just have to pay directly for. And this is a suggested amount, it's not a required amount, but it was a way to identify what would we be, what exactly would we be sponsoring. And then I would also like us to have a table, I did talk to Alyssa a little bit about whether we could have a table there where we could talk about the county, we could talk about our open positions, different things that the county does, services that we provide, and really, I think it gives us an opportunity to have some exposure with people who maybe don't think about what the county does, just in general. Any opportunity we have to share information with the residents of the county, I think is valuable. And it's an important day. The questions are, and I don't disagree any further than to that, of sponsoring of a Kona ice truck, is that meeting the public purpose, I guess would be my one question, and then where would we, where would we keep the revenue from, I mean, where would we keep for it from the next one? I think, I think it serves the public purpose in the same way that supporting the county chairs, supporting the Iowa Games, any of those types of activities, I guess I would. In that same, I mean. Then, like you said, just another question would be, where would we? I've got my question. Yeah, I did not, I don't remember that. I did not have a conversation with Lisa about it. Because I think under like the Iowa Games, or when they previously, before I was on here, like the National Special Olympics, they were under tourism, education and tourism, so I'm not sure if that would, that would fall under education, that would just be, the question is to, now I ask it because I hate to say yes, we want to support this, which I don't, like I said, I don't disagree, what they want to do is to have a thing come back for us and say how we work.
Right.
But that would be my only, my only question. Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't talk to Lisa, I should have, but I wasn't sure where we would land. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I asked her, and she, I just couldn't remember, and so she had mentioned to me about, she does, we get some of the others in the tourism, we're under the education. And maybe also their education, for giving me tables and providing information, I don't know, I didn't go that far. Give a shot, sir.
Well, the other thought I had is in terms of precedent, and if we do this, what other asks might come our way, and do we have a policy? Or do we have a thought about that? I'm just thinking, we're going into the summer months, we've got a lot of parades, we've got a lot of festivals that are going on around the county, and I wouldn't be surprised, you know, which we've not done anything for before. So I, I just think we might end up with a lot of additional asks, and to have some kind of broader criteria about how we deal with, you know, those kind of requests, I think. Sometimes we'll set up a fund or a program or something like side grants or something like that. And I, now I kind of see why that's done, you know, because it's something you anticipate may happen more than once. Kind of getting a thought together of, is this something we want to do as a policy or a practice or a program, or whatever you want to call it. And sometimes that's better, it's better done during budgeting to figure those things out, and just, you know, wish we could do next year, but that leaves a whole parade, there's a whole summer festival, parade season ahead of us right now. I'm just wondering where I might go, that's all I'm saying. I, I thank you for the work, and I agree that it is a really important thing to recognize. I'm just not sure how it fits in with the, you know, the things that we are doing on my. And the public purpose test might be something. I mean, I hadn't thought about, you know, some of the things we've been looking at.
Well, I mean, I think we could make the argument that the public purpose is providing place making, it's showing that the county recognizes the, the value of celebrating this day. And, and understand, I'm not, what I'm saying is not saying that you don't personally think that it's not an important day, that's not what I'm saying. I think, I think I need to get creative. I'm not really sure what that is yet.
Might ask Alyssa. She's got a question, and it's been here the longest. Are there similar things that previous boards have done?
I don't recall like that type of a sponsorship, like I think the overall programs they've done, but not specific to.
An event?
Not necessarily an event, but actually a sponsorship of a food truck to give those to, I mean, so I know we've done like the Iowa Games, I know it's different, but it's been the overall sponsorship of the event, so it doesn't go towards giving out the ice or the different things, I mean, I don't, I don't know if that would make a difference in the public purpose, but it's, I don't know if there's an administrative cost that the city has, or are there sponsors just not necessarily sponsoring a specific piece that goes to individuals, but maybe the overall event? I, I don't know, I'm not an expert on that.
And maybe that's my, yeah, I thought, oh, I, I did not want to come and just say, let's just, let's just do this thing without saying this is what we would be, and maybe I, I got, you know, too specific.
But I don't think we've done like a, any specific events, I don't know if like other cities have had other, I don't recall, and if we have, it might have been for.
Yeah, I don't know, have any other communities do anything recognizing that day, and if they then want to come over for sponsorship as well, I mean, I guess it's up to them to.
I think Ames might be the first city in Story County, I know Duane, Duane did a big.
Ankeny did a big one.
Did Ankeny do one, too? I know Duane did.
I was thinking.
So, yeah.
Johnson County is doing a huge celebration this year, but it's, it's county.
It's county driven.
Yeah, and, and I, I just, I really would like to see the county involved, and I didn't feel like it was, I didn't feel like it was appropriate to say to the, to the organizers in Ames, I would like the county to be involved, I think it's important that the county is involved without providing some support also for the event, and so that, I mean, the funding was my idea. Because, yeah. Are they having tables of other organizations there? I'm not sure what all, I can get a list of. So are they charging for folks to have tables there? I don't believe so. So we could still be there and provide county information.
And yeah, we've got other sponsorships at other events, like we've done sponsorship of the NAACP, we've done a table sponsorship. I've just never, I don't know if we've ever done like
A specific.
A specific, something to give to those attending, so we've done the other, like I said, I don't know if Ames has any, if they have any sponsors, or if it's all.
Yeah, yeah.
So they do, okay, are they sponsoring certain events, like other, like other food trucks?
They were.
Yeah.
I think the city of Ames is, or the Ames Public Library is contributing money. Iowa State Black Faculty and Staff. NAACP, and I can get a list of the different funders or people who are actually funding. A lot of those are city of Ames departments. Right, right, and then I'm just looking there, is there partners involved in the planning, and actually providing funding, or they are on the table helping? Some of them, some of them are providing funding, some of them have not committed funding yet, because she hasn't.
Sure.
She, she hasn't got all the numbers together just yet.
But I think if they, like the table, I know if they would charge like those to go, and we have done stuff like that.
Yes.
Yeah, just not the sponsorship of a specific item to everybody that participates, but I'm not saying that wouldn't be, I don't, I'm not an expert on the public purpose, so.
Right, and I don't, I don't believe they're charging for tables, but I might be wrong, so I can find that out also.
I always participated in the city's local faith. And I don't think that, I don't think we have a question there to provide any funding for that.
Right, because it hasn't been a festival. And I can get more information. Yeah, I see the question is, too, is if they're not charging for any other tables, it's an Ames event, we still be there but not have to, not be charged for it, I mean, if they're not charging for any more. Yes, we could, yeah, the answer is yes. I'm understanding what you're saying of wanting to contribute, but I'm also looking at, that's how Ames has set up for their festival, if it's still there, and educate, at least start it out that way this year, and then look at next year and say, is there something where we could potentially get the table, like again, that money intrude on their, their festival?
I just want to get out of the ask, if they ask, it's really, you know, right out of proportion or anything like that, it's just that, yeah, what it would be going for in the precedent setting, and maybe you could sort of figure out something more about a policy. What, what are we intending to do? It might not be a Juneteenth, but maybe something else, you know. Scandinavian days, for example, say, gee, would you, just then you could say, would you provide something there? Sudders days, or whatever.
I will get more information.
Maybe just look and see if we are a sponsor, I mean, we can pull, I could talk to Lisa Mercury, too, and see, I'm not recalling anything, other than like the NAACP where we sponsor.
I, I asked.
Oh, you asked, and we haven't.
I asked her, and she suffered the NAACP.
We've done that a couple of times, yeah.
Education or whatever, but otherwise it's been, yeah, like the bigger event, it was the Iowa Games, it was.
Was when we had the National Special Lookers came here. It's where we, and we're not actually been funding Iowa Games.
But I do think like a sponsorship, it's not just Ames residents that can attend. So I mean, it's everybody. So I think that if we did a sponsorship that would serve all Story County citizens. Yeah.
Yeah. I, I wonder those two should end with tourism.
Yep. And that might, I mean, I don't know if that really. There would be an area, I think.
It looks like, um, you are up, Joe. We're moving on to IRVM quarterly report.
Well, thanks for inviting me to the party.
Yeah. Thanks for staying till the end.
I learned a lot and I'm able to catch up on stuff. So, um, we'll get to this later. So Joe Quaker, Story County Conservation, IRVM leader. Um, yeah. Last time I was here was, uh, the 15th of February. So there's been a lot going on. And by the way, there's a lot gonna go on because it's growing season. The rains are over, which we needed. Things are growing. So you got a little update. I threw in numbers from like FY22, so July up to current. So we've done some programs, a little landowner, uh, well, consultation with a lot of different folks and drill rentals. We've done a few presentations. I worked with the Conservation Corps of Iowa on herbicide. Uh, training down in Jester Park and I helped Jerry Keys a couple of weeks ago uh, with the Master Conservationist Program. So we bust everybody out to a prairie remnant, went for a hike. Um, and that's about it. Some herbicide with our folks. And we have a lot of new, uh, Story County Conservation, as you know, has several new hires. So we take advantage of myself and I guess you could call wisdom on some things. So, uh, evaluations. Uh, we did a lot of research on tractors because we do have one budgeted, uh, in FY23. We wanted to get on this. Get ready to pull the trigger because, um, this may not be a shock to you. Things are out there quite a ways. So when you order, they kind of try to say within six months. With that being said, we ordered a pickup a year ago, Chevy pickup, and it's not even on the roster to be built. So we may look at that. Um, it's a Chevrolet. I can say that either it doesn't really matter to me. That's the one we needed or the one that, that won. The thing is it is a single cab. Most of us now, the people and the government like the double cabs, crew cabs, you could throw more stuff in the back. But this one, we wanted a single cab because we didn't want a really long wheelbase. It's hard to turn around. Uh, and they don't make single cabs. It's not on their front line. So we're working with that. We're going to see how long that's going to take. And we have some grants come, that will be coming through. They went to the board, uh, Conservation Board last week, uh, some small equipment that I'm, we're writing, uh, the grants are written. I gotta submit them here in the next couple of weeks to Living Roadway Trust Fund. Um, uh, 80% funded, but a lot of this equipment isn't that expensive. So, but every little penny helps. Moving on down, 26 landowners I've talked to lately, um, that nine equipment rentals is up to 14 over the weekend. Um, we've done a little bit of custom planting and mowing and some burning uh, north of Zering on a property that we're helping manage. Uh, that is all, uh, charged back to the landowner. So, uh, and that has happened. As far as right away, we did about 10 acres, nine and a half acres, 17 acres of natural areas, which are primarily our seed nurseries. Um, and we still have 20 acres to do. And in a, in another wildlife area, we did burn last Friday. Uh, it's getting kind of late. You don't really want to push the burning too far into the nesting season. But this is a good time of year to burn to control grow or cool seasons, if you could get it to go. Let's see, work orders. There's a lot out there. We've done about 20, not 12. We worked, uh, yesterday. They're going today. Can read through that. And so, and we have about 35 work orders open. That's Darren's staff, uh, working around bridges and around intakes. You may or may not, uh, remember we had about a four inch rain a month ago that really did some weird things with corn stalks in the southern part of the county. So wherever they are working and scraping, we need to kind of seed that, stabilize it. Um, and we're working on spending the budget down, you know, what we promised to do. Getting to the spring. So it's noxious weed season. I'm going to explain a little bit, uh, and not too long about the weed law. Um, so you can understand that. Uh, the board typically may get one or two calls a year on noxious weeds and you can funnel those to me. Hopefully they just call me directly, but you never know. So I know they're going to start mowing shoulders next week or maybe late this week. That's Darren's crew for site distance um, on the hard surface roads. That's kind of something that needs to happen. Um, some people like that, some people don't. But really does need to happen, uh, you know, just for site distance on intersections of things. Typically Story County IRVM sprays about 225 centerline miles. That's both sides of the road. Uh, in Story County. A lot of other counties spray the whole county. We don't do that. We just really hit the hot spots. We do have a new sprayer so we can spray more. Uh, but we are, uh, pretty much a, a county of disturbance. We have a lot of uh, farming going on. So there's a lot of overspray from the farmers going into the roadside. There's a lot of construction. Uh, and, and we're low. We're kind of at the pothole region of Iowa and north. So we have a lot of ponding and flooding. So a lot of weeds are moving around. So we just kind of get what we can. Uh, if people call up, we certainly go do what we're supposed to do. And I'm going to skip the weed law and I was going to bring it up on my phone, but I think I remembered, you know, I, I was studying it back there. So in 2019, 18, and then in 19, it was finalized. The weed law was redone. Uh, there were, the weed laws as old as the early 1900s. Okay. Um, they've been trying to work on it. So a lot of those weeds have been there forever. They don't really do much to landowner or profit. Uh, doesn't hurt corn production. Some of them aren't even around anymore. The thing is we're getting new plants coming up. What used to grow in southern Ar- Northern Arkansas grows here now. We got about six inches and more rain and I think we're three quarters of a degree hotter in Iowa. So our growing season's a little different. So we can grow plants and not all of them are good. Um, so they're changing the weed law. Uh, there was about 30 species on it. Uh, they've taken a lot of those off, but they made Palmer amaranth number one. Uh, which came in through all the CRP about eight years ago. We don't see a lot of that around. It could've went crazy, but it didn't. And so, but it's still the number one wanted list. That's class A must control. Then you have class B. That's like, these are going to be state recognized noxious weeds. So that's your Canada thistle, which is the only really perennial thistle we have. Musk thistle, bolt thistle, field bind weed, leafy spurge, and I think that's about it. They, and I brought the other plants in last year, the big tall native thistles that have white on the leaves. Those are native. Those are on the list anymore. Those, you see those late summer in September. I get calls on people wanting them to spray, but they're native and they really help our pollinators. Goldfinches love that. Um, so anyway, that's the weed law. I looked up Minnesota's weed law and they have 37 species. And I looked up Wisconsin. So they have a lot more, but it's more wildlife stuff. Garlic mustard, Japanese knotweed, uh, barberry, mile a minute. So in the states north of us that really rely on more, um, tourism money in their wild areas, they spend a little more money on that. Purple loose stripe, things that can really hurt the environment. Um, we're more this, you know, we're 95% ag. So, um, but I think that you have, the weed resolution might've been on your consent agenda. So what we can and can't do, uh, we can't declare a weed noxious. The state, um, agriculture deputy, uh, ag, ag, uh, that, that's him. Uh, he's the one who does that through Congress and all that other stuff. But what we do is we say, here are some plants that we recognize as to be kind of bad, Story County. And those are, as you listed, we have purple loose stripe, garlic mustard, some other things on there that if I see out there, I can call someone up and say, hey, we recognize this is a really not a very good plant. Let's try to control. Um, so that's kind of how that works. Any impressions on the weed law? Perfect. Um, last but not least, uh, I'll show you these things. We do need to let everyone know that, um, we do have contract spray coming up uh, for road sides. That can be a hot topic or not. Typically they do a good job. Sometimes someone may call in upset, but a lot of times we get calls say, hey, it looks really good. Um, that's not going to happen until July and I'll report on it again, I think by then, but they are going to cover Milford, Franklin, Washington, Grant and Nevada. So right smack dab through the middle of the county. Um, and then next year we'll come back around and then we'll start over. So those are the four townships, maybe five that we're going to get.
Do you do it with cedars?
What's that?
Will the cedar, will that spray get the cedars?
Little ones, yes. Not big ones. Um, you drive, uh, up George Washington Carver. I sprayed those little cedars. A lot of those I think died. I hope they did. They don't look the best all round, but what do you do? So they will. The cedar trees are tough to, a tough deal to get. They have to be about as tall as this table, no, no more. So what I brought was this plant, um, the plant that killed Socrates. Can anyone guess what family it's in? Who has a garden?
It's a carrot family.
It's in the carrot family. So you can, what's that?
Bean slice.
Uh, it's a relative. Um, very good. You can see the purple on here and it's hollow. This is poison hemlock. So if you were to take this and grind it all up and put it in your tea, it probably wouldn't, that's, yeah, that's what she did to her husband. You know, if you know the story. I'd actually look that up. Um, so this is a biennial and it's not on the noxious weed list, but we have it on ours, on our, uh, recognized. So, uh, biennial means it grows only, reproduces only by seed. So if you take away the seed source over time, you get rid of the plant. So mowing, um, it's hard to mow in some of these areas to get a mower in. So you try to spray it at this height or shorter. This will get 10 to 12 feet tall.
Really?
Yeah. Really tall. So it saves as a rosette the first year and then the second year after the heat. I was watching this little plant. It's actually right in town. As you go out onto the underpass on S14, um, there's a couple of patches and, um, this thing is like a three day of bolt. This is what it did in three days. Kind of like what asparagus did. Um, so that's our little lesson for today. And then I think we're going to meet, uh, we're going to have a little tour of our shop, but we talked about hydro seeding. I don't think we've ever had you right on top of hydro seeder, but I can just invade your space. So this is what we do. And I'll tell you, um, this is seed and recycled wood. And this is what we put in our hydro seeder, 50 pound bags, about 600 pounds of load with the prairie seed. And it mixes with the big, there's big agitators and then we add glue. It's a wood byproduct and, um, we spray it out. And if I could get it in a ball, it'd probably make it stick to that wall. Where's Joby at? No. Could you, you want to take some home?
What's in it?
Uh, I'm not sure. It looks like a lot of that prairie stuff.
I don't want any of that, Joe.
So that's kind of how that.
Just leave the bucket. I'll take it off.
I can. Um, any questions? For me, I think I kind of went through everything.
I said something about drapes.
Oh yeah, I forgot. That's the sheet here. So Drage ditch work. I'll sit back down. Um, what we did this, uh, winter, actually in the spring, we hired a construction Jensen, uh, won that deal of that bid and did some, uh, scrubbing and willow removal on New Albany 68, which is just northeast of town. Um, we do have numbers in, we had to work with Scott Wall on levying some money for, uh, eight drainage districts, about 14 miles of spraying re sprouts. So no longer are we going to do the bulk of it, Story County IRVM. We're going to hire a, someone who actually does it for a living. Uh, and can free us up so we can have a little more time in the summer and to just focus on other things. So, um, yeah, that's, that's an FY23. In the meantime, we are going to do a little bit in-house spraying every year uh, along our open ditches. And that's going to be Grant 13, which is over by the interstate. And then, uh, the beloved Milford 32, which is right behind the old county home. So we're going to keep that brush down. And for the most part, our construction, uh, work that was done in 20, uh, we had exactly in 2020, 20 brush piles that we needed to burn up and Tyler got on that on and off all year. Um, they stretched all the way up from north of Zering down to Slater. So we had kind of had to hit it in areas and stay up there. And we, we did burn up, uh, it's the best way to do it when they pile brush, your contractor comes in, let it dry down and just light them on fire and kind of babysit them for a couple of days. And there's snow around there. It's winter. So they're not going to go anywhere. So.
So how can we keep the head of those open ditches? Cause we've had so many of them that have these huge trees in them and they're big projects. Spray, will we have enough money in that budget to spray it?
Well, I think your question is, um, well, though that's, that's levied money for all these. So that's our job and we work hard on figuring out what drainage districts need what. And so if there is a construction project like Boone Story one, Boone Story three, where we had all these piles, then we plan ahead. We get a contractor, we get quotes coming in and they take care of it and we make sure we levy enough money so we can burn the piles, which takes a couple of thousand bucks. It was all just for Tyler to go with a pickup. Um, and now we're talking about maintenance. So, uh, the big projects and new drainage ditches that are being dug out. We really want to make sure we're on top of that. So we don't let the trees sprout up. A few native shrubs are fine, but we don't want a bunch of trees falling in there. So that's just, that's why you have us monitoring all these open ditches and keeping track of it.
And then the, the contractors that you're talking about, they're, if you see something that needs done, then
Yeah.
they'll go in and actually do it. So they'll monitor, they'll do the.
Yep, we'll, and that's a lot of work. And other counties sometimes have that drainage ditch watchman program. That's, they're doing what Darren and I do, you know, so we, at, at the moment, we're putting together all the quotes for all the work where the drainage ditch watchman would do all that. We just call them up and say, hey, there's a problem on Milford 32. And they would send someone out, but that's a pretty expensive way to go. So far we're keeping up with what we can. Answer your question? All right. Okay. Cheers.
Thanks, Joe. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. I'll be right here. Nine o'clock. All right, I'll be right here. Nine o'clock.
Great, you have nothing, no other reports, any upcoming agenda items?
Slater date here. Put that back on. We have the information we need to.
Is that you checked into prior? I mean, is there any additional information that we need?
Well, I'm, I sent, I sent an email this morning. I've not gotten a response on it yet, but I would expect I'll have that.
Okay.
So. Now it's time for public comment number two, comments on the comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to record requirements. Open meetings, law, but maybe still in the future. Anyone would like to make public comment? Or raise your hand on Zoom. See, no one will post public comment number two. Days on assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. Supervisor, how do I start? Sure. Tomorrow I'm going to work from home. I've got a couple of appointments and a couple of meetings over in Ames. I will be in the office Thursday, but I do have aging resources meeting Thursday morning and then their department head and elected officials soon as well on Thursday is my agenda. Friday, I'm going to take the day off because it's special look next. Monday morning, I will Joseph mentioned to be out at the shop. And then it's like the state of the county.
Is anybody going to the emergency management training tonight?
I hit it on tomorrow, but I might see if I could switch it to tonight.
I'm not sure if I'm going to make it or not. I have a story come quarterly meeting tomorrow. A CIRPA meeting Thursday morning. We have department heads and elected officials Thursday afternoon.
That's what I have on my agenda.
There's a small field we're going to drain this district later to that. That's it. I have anyone on Friday. What time Monday was, was Joe's?
Oh, he just asked me if I wanted to go out to the shop. So I'm going out at nine. Welcome to join.
I may.
That's all I've got. Many of those same things. I am not going to the emergency management tonight. I have Surratt tonight and Housing Trust meeting this afternoon. And I've got a couple of appointments this week, one on Wednesday and one on Friday. Personal appointments. And then hunger collaboration on Thursday. I will be in late Monday because my daughter will be in town for some. That's it. Anything else? Looking second and.
Hi, looking. Hi, you're a drunk. Thank you.